So, all right. So, yeah, the public comment will be taken on the, anything on the action item of the agenda, and Kathy will be handling that. Did you check in through Kathy Nash?
No, I haven't, because I didn't see that that was part of the process. So Kathy Nash, I am checking in with you. Mike Cullen here.
Thank you. So noted.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you know, do we have everybody?
Mr. Leary, are you on the line?
He was Kathy, but he, then it said he left, but I don't know if he's coming back on.
What are you gonna say? What's your theme?
Becky, are you?
Yes, we have, we have six members here.
I see Becky. All right. Normally Becky says she'll check with Bobby. I didn't know if you wanted to check with Bobby.
I can do that right now.
Thank you.
Call Bobby Leary.
Calling now.
So we'll just give that a minute Kathy, and then we'll call the meeting to order here shortly.
Of course.
Ray, this is Stephanie. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good. I'm using another computer, so.
Oh, yeah. No, you're good. You're, you're, your video is good here.
I'll tell him you're on mute.
Okay, great.
Okay, so Bobby is, Bobby is on, but he's, he says he's on right now. He can see all of us. He might be one of those, he can hear us all, but he can't see us. So you're not.
What are his, what are his last two digits?
I see him. I've got him now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So we got, we can see you now. We've got it. All right, bye.
All right, Kathy, we can call the meeting to order then, and have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Ms. Neary?
Yes.
Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
He may be muted. I don't know. I don't.
It shows he just rejoined, and he is muted.
Yeah.
Can Bobby unmute?
He's just left the meeting. Ms. Winslow?
Here.
All right, so we'll, we'll give Bobby, give Bobby a minute to see if he can get back in. He keeps popping up. I see him come up, and he goes off, so I don't know what's. All righty. So we'll see what happens. Hopefully he can get on. The meeting, there's, the action item on the meeting is approval of the superintendent's contract, which the draft is attached to your backup for the school committee. I don't believe there'll be any need for executive session, but that is posted. If there is a need for executive session, it is posted that way. I believe, I don't, do I not see, Neil has called in as well, correct Kathy?
That is correct.
Okay.
He introduced himself.
Oh, okay, sorry. Gotcha. I just didn't see him on my, so the draft of the superintendent's contract, basically, what's happened is, is, was an evaluation the past four to six weeks. We worked through an evaluation process of the superintendent. We moved it to the summertime to do a better eval after the school year, and to be able to set goals. We're working on setting those goals up, but as a result of the evaluation and the goals that were met from last year, it was recommended that we extend the superintendent's contract for a period of two years. There's a draft, as I said, a draft contract, a draft amendment to her contract that is attached to board docs. And so the action item is based on that draft amendment. So if there's a motion, a motion would be in order to approve the draft amendment and a second, so that we could have discussion on it this evening.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Flowers, motion by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mrs. Boland. So is there any discussion by the school committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Louisa's hand up, so. Go ahead, Louisa.
So my comment is.
Louisa, hold on one second. I just want to remind everybody of the general, if we can all mute to make the listening easier, that would be helpful. And just because Mike has asked to speak, we'll do school committee comments first, and then I will certainly, before any votes are taken, open it up to public comment. So if we could all mute our microphones, and we'll move through the meeting as rapidly as we can. Thanks.
Okay, so you want me to go? Okay. So in her original contract, which is back in 2013, 14, basically the salary portion, it says, "The salary of the superintendent shall be determined on an annual basis after the completion of the evaluation." So I would very much like to separate those two, as the contract states, and have a vote both on an increased effective July 1st, 2020, so it would be retroactive based on her positive performance evaluation. And then the contract may, would have to be reworded to be what her then compensation would be at the end of this year, going into the 2022, 2023 year, with an extension, an optional extension into that third year. I'd like to make a motion to adjust it that way, but to move forward with the contract.
So to the, to the draft amendment that we have before us, just so I understand, I made notes as you were speaking. You would, you would amend the amendment to the superintendent's contract to read that for the year 20, July 20, July 1st, 2020, to, the salary would be 2% retroactive to that date, and that for the July 1st, 2021, and July 1st, 2022 pay raises would be subject to the outcome of her yearly evaluation. I just want to make sure I understood your amendment correctly.
Yes.
All right, so that's your amendment. Is there a second to your amendment?
Second.
So there's a second by Becky, and I'm sure there's going to be questions from the school committee on the amendment. Or clarity, or anybody, did everybody understand from the school committee?
I did.
Okay, Sandra?
Yeah.
Any, any questions on the amendment to the amended superintendent's contract? So I am going to take a vote on the amendment language to the, the motion, and then we can continue with comment and get to any public comment. So hearing no discussion on the amended action item, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Nay.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Six, one.
Okay. Sorry, mind me. Okay, so we've amended the action item. Is there any other comment from members of the school committee before I open it up for public comment?
I may have something to say, but I would like to probably add it after I hear the public comment.
Okay, Sandra, I see your hands up. Go ahead.
I have my, thank you. As far as the, and I like what the amendment says, because it just gives us a good timeframe. Having been one of the people who was in on the evaluation of Dr. Jermaine, I feel that this is certainly well-earned, well-called for. Just the observation and getting all of the information, and it comes constantly from the superintendent's office, and observing and noting all of the very, very hard work above and beyond the call of duty, as they say, that Dr. Jermaine certainly deserves this contract extension, renewal, and the proposed increase in compensation. I've, she's the second superintendent that I have been working with as a school committee member, but I've certainly known enough superintendents over the course of my years in the Newport school system. And I say she's the best. She really is. This is, and I'm as objective as I can be, again, having been, and I still call myself in the profession, so I, I really don't question any of this at all. Again, I think the amendment really even clarifies things better. It just makes a lot more sense.
Okay, Louisa.
I'm just gonna say I'm gonna vote to extend this contract, and I want to talk about, not only was the, there a strong performance evaluation, but Rogers has moved from a two-star to a three-star high school. The absentee rates in the first four months of 2019 were significantly improved, particularly the ninth grade academy was a great performance this year, and showed remarkable improvements. It's too bad there was no testing this year to show the progress that was made. I want to say that the execution that Newport did for distance learning was commended by the, by RIDE, as well as the governor, both thanks, thanks to the city having provided the computers, but the actual physical operational execution was above and beyond, I think. The state national awards that have gone up at least five times as many between 2015 and 2019. Again, those things were all canceled due to COVID, which is again a sad thing, but I think that that's a remarkable achievement in outcomes. The NACTEC and ROTC special accreditations and citations are another very important measure of progress by the school department, led by the superintendent. But just, I, I will be voting to extend the contract, as well as increasing the salary, as we said. Thank you.
All righty, is there anybody else on the school committee that would like to comment before we open it up for public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Nash, if you could, I'm not sure if, I know Mike Cullen would like to speak. I don't know if you have anybody else signed up for public comment. And our public comment is, as always, limited to three minutes, and you, if, please state your name and your address for the record, and Mrs. Nash.
Mr. Cullen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Cullen, 19 Bayside Avenue, Newport. I'd like to make a couple of comments on your process of evaluation, as well as make a suggestion for your consideration, Mr. Chairman. On the process, many people have come to me, and they've asked some really basic questions about the performance evaluation metrics. Not the grade sheet, well, the grade sheet, not the grades, but how you are evaluating the superintendent. Again, I, I think the committee would do itself a big favor by highlighting, pushing into the public space, what that evaluation metric looks like. Other questions relate to what extent have the school committee members discussed potential performance goals and metrics with other system stakeholders, whether either formally or informally. I know you talk amongst yourselves, but I don't know to what extent you work with parents, with teachers, with the business community to get inputs on goals and metrics. And I certainly hope that the formal evaluation sheet that you have, which I have not seen, has a substantial focus on academic achievements. I heard a reference to the state report card, so I'm assuming the answer is yes. I have a ongoing major concern about RIDE's latest Spring 2020 SurveyWorks responses coming out of all three schools. I give kudos to the Pell system for all of the teachers who responded. A lot of improvement there. I'm really, really, really concerned about what the 50-plus teachers at Thompson said at SurveyWorks. Their responses, folks, Mr. Chairman, put Thompson in the bottom 10% of US schools, based on their standardized responses. I know the RIDE SurveyWorks information is very hard to access. You have to dig through layers of the RIDE portal, but they have very profound issues dealing with school leadership, with the quality of professional development, with the quantity of professional development. I don't know what's going on. It merits a lot of internal discussion. Here's the suggestion, Mr. Chairman. A lot of people have been saying Black Lives Matter. I support Black Lives Matter initiatives all across the, the US. I'm now using the phrase Black Minds Matter, M-I-N-D-S. Why is that? Because, again, I see a chronic problem of math achievement inside Thompson Middle School, the extent to which RIDE suppresses the basic achievement results, because less than 5% are proficient. So my strong suggestion, outside of your contract renewal, is please consider a bonus, please consider an incentive bonus system.
Excuse me, that's time.
Yep, so, can I just finish?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead. I was just gonna say, let's, the timer shut off, and you can certainly finish your thought, so.
Yeah, here's the suggestion, and this may be unique as hell for Rhode Island, Mr. Chairman, but many school districts across the US, Richmond, Virginia, Seattle, many in Indiana, also offer the superintendent a bonus program. Sometimes they call it a performance incentive plan, or an incentive stipend, where you could lay out a set of 10 goals, short-term goals, that would have dollar amounts associated with it. Oftentimes, it could represent 10, 15 to 20% of the superintendent's salary. That's not at risk. That could be earned above and beyond the salary levels. And I would recommend a careful study of something like that to provide some additional carrots to work on some of these really serious areas, such as hiring and retaining minority teachers that people have been talking about for 30 years. Or improving the math performance, or improving the math performance for the massive Hispanic population. So that's the suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, school committee people, for listening.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. I, I can say that over the past couple of years, the evaluation has changed up the goals. They don't have incentives, as you suggest, but that has been talked about, and certainly can be looked at going forward. Mrs. Nash, are there any other comments? Anybody else signed up for public comment this evening?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment.
All right, so I think, if I recall, Becky was holding her comments for after the public comment period, so I don't know. Becky, do you want to?
Yes, I, I would like to address Mr. Cullen's comments concerning the SurveyWorks at Thompson Middle School. I will say, you know, we've, we've had some, some issues with leadership, and, and, and the transitioning from different principals. And I want to say that, you know, I think, and I would welcome him, when things get better, to be able to come into the schools, to see how much better things are going. We settled a contract with the teachers' union. The teachers' union and, and the superintendent could not be working any closer right now to take care of all of these hundreds of issues with COVID-19. We, it, the, it's a new day, and the culture and climate is changing, and it's not reflective of, I believe, of the SurveyWorks that you saw. And I also wanted to say that our superintendent, there's no one, I think, that works harder than she does. I, I believe that, you know, it's, it's amazing what she is able to accomplish. And the money that she brings into this district for different programs has, has really helped, you know, to raise the bar for all students, you know. And so I believe that, you know, extending her contract is the correct thing to do, and I want to thank her for everything she's done in this last year to get us where we are right now. And that's it.
All righty. I see a couple of people popping on, so I, anybody else would like to make any comments from the school committee?
Yep, I would.
Okay, Ms. Neary, go right ahead.
Great. Thanks for allowing me to speak. So a couple of things. I am going to start by simply saying that I, just so that there is no ambiguity, I am fully in favor of extending the contract for the superintendent, as it has been amended. We'll just start with that. I've only been on the school committee for two years, and in the two years, there has been substantial improvement, as evidenced by the, by the evaluation, which had a set of metrics on which, upon which we, we judge the superintendent. And for the past two years, those metrics have been met. You know, sometimes just barely, but this year, absolutely, they've been met. To Mr. Cullen's point about SurveyWorks, that was one of the metrics. It's not as if we don't see it. We also see SurveyWorks. We also see where the problems are. We do talk to parents. We do talk to teachers. This is not done in a vacuum. And those conversations drive the evaluation form, and it is based on then that evaluation form that we have made, our determination, or at least that I have made, I will speak for myself, that I have made that determination. Are we blind to the difficulties that we, that still remain? No, we are not. Again, we do this day in and day out. No, we are not. Do we expect one person to make the changes? No, we do not. Why do we not? Because this is a system-wide, society-wide issue, and to put it all on one single person is disingenuous, at best. It is upon, it is on all of us to change the actual system within which all of our public school children are working, all of them. Every single one of them. The entire educational system, as it is set up, is set up on a premise that some children are better able to achieve than others. And I will say this, that this superintendent, in the two years that I have known her professionally, has worked very hard to root out, within the systems, those premises. And if this is gonna be the last public statement that I make on behalf of the superintendent, I intended to be this forceful. And the superintendent herself can tell you that I have been a critic, that I have called and I have emailed, and my colleagues can say the same thing. They know. But I will not sit here and listen and make assumptions, and also really putting the whole weight of the change of the American educational system on one person.
Who did that?
I believe is unfair.
May I make your comment?
The entire, the entire system has flaws, and this superintendent has worked within the constraint of the system to fix the flaws. So to Thompsons, very specifically, it was part of the evaluation, and there has been change at the level, at the leadership, at the building level. There were issues at Pell, at Rogers, and they have been, there have been changes in each of the buildings, and those were part of the evaluation. We did not, the evaluation did not just, we did not invent it. It didn't come out of nowhere, and we did look at other school districts. So that is all I want to say, because I feel like it needs to be said. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Is there, okay, Ms. Winslow?
Hi, I, Mr. Chair, I had just prepared something to say, because as the obviously very newest member on the committee, I was nervous about taking such a significant vote, and so I sat down, and I said to myself, okay, you know, where do I stand? What have I seen? What have I not seen? Where, where do I want to vote tonight? And I just want to read that to you, if I may. So, no, I, I know, I'm aware there was a rocky start to Superintendent Jermaine's term. I'm aware she inherited a mess, a school department that had been level-funded for years, even as students with significant need arrived at our doors. I know that the budget finances, HR records were in complete disarray when she arrived, but Dr. Jermaine has brought on an outstanding business director, who is not only taking over much of the HR role this year, but also taking true ownership of the financial side of our school district, and I believe we're in good hands here. When the Jacobs report found over $3 billion in Rhode Island school building deficiencies in 2017, Newport ranked at the top for needs. Dr. Jermaine oversaw the multi-year effort to put together a successful application and get Newport in line for the money that we voted for. The school administration relationship with the Teachers Association of Newport and the city have improved dramatically. Not only can Dr. Jermaine build bridges, she can rebuild bridges. And to everyone listening, I say, ask yourself if you're willing to do that. Dr. Jermaine has overseen the rebirth of the Newport area Career and Technical Center. Over 100 students from out of district bringing in over $1 million in tuition. Our PTEC program is graduating students with a high school diploma and an associate's degree from CCRI in cybersecurity, which is easily one of the hottest fields in America today. CTE pathways represent real opportunity for students, and Dr. Jermaine is committed to making this a reality for all students. NACTEC has re-earned the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation this year. We're one of only two or three CTE schools in Rhode Island to hold this distinction. Our students have won numerous awards and love what they do. Dr. Jermaine pulls in millions in grant funding for exciting learning opportunities that save taxpayers money. Just this summer, Newport was awarded funds for high-quality ELA curriculum, professional development, Chromebook, and other technology purchases. This is money that Newport taxpayers do not have to give the school department. The COVID-19 response and planning for 2020, 2021 this year has been tremendous. Communication with parents and the school committee has gone to a new level. She works tirelessly on this, and as Chair of the East Bay Educational Collaborative, she is leading the eight East Bay school districts, Little Compton, Tiverton, Bristol Warren, Barrington, East Providence, Portsmouth, Middletown, in their COVID communication plans. In addition, she was recently elected Chair of the New England School Development Council, and she serves on the Board of the Rhode Island School Superintendents Association. My point is that other school leaders are listening to her, and I, for one, want to continue to have her lead us through the COVID-19 pandemic response and beyond. Do we have serious achievement gaps? Sure we do. We've also made progress closing them in recent years. Are we still working on the climate and culture of our schools? You bet. But let me remind everyone, our problems are not unique to Newport. These are America's problems. They are the results of racism, bias, stereotypes, and failed policy. We should all be outraged at the lost potential of so many kids. But if we are to fix it, we need all hands on deck, working towards the common good. We need to educate ourselves on how we are unconsciously contributing to their failures, not placing the entirety of this enormous societal problem on one person. We all have work to do, because we collectively are the obstacles, but we are a team. Let's get it done. So thank you to Dr. Jermaine, and I do support her contract. a team. Let's get it done. So thank you to Dr. Jermaine, and I do support her contract.
Thank you. Any other comment? Do, I'm, Mr. Leary, are you with us, Bob, still? No? Okay. I'm not sure what happened with Mr. Leary. I know he's been in and out. So I think everybody's had their, their comment, all the school committee members. I'm not sure what Mr. Leary's problems are this evening with Stainon, but he's coming in and out. If he comes back, we'll certainly let him speak. I will say I will echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues this evening. As usual, many of them said it very nicely. But again, the evaluation process has been tweaked. We do set the goals to what we believe are relevant and important and achievable. So we have set them. Do we recognize, as many have pointed out tonight, we, we, I think everybody is mindful and recognizes that we have improvement in most areas. We can always improve. The superintendent, as many have pointed out, definitely four goals that were set of her at last year at this time, or a little earlier, last spring, she certainly did meet them, exceeded them in many ways, as we expect the goals that will be set for her going forth for the next year evaluation. I would hope she would exceed because we all, we all benefit, including our children, when the superintendent is successful in her goal. So it benefits everybody for her to do her best and to achieve the goals set by the school committee. So as I said, I'll agree with everything that was said tonight. I do agree she's done an outstanding job. I probably more so than the other six members of the school committee work closely with the superintendent, focus everybody's thoughts and energy and try to keep the superintendent moving in everybody's desired direction. So I will say she's done an outstanding job, meeting our needs, answering our questions, and we just hope to move forward. So with that said, I don't see Mr. Leary as having popped back up. So if there's no other questions, discussion, we'll have a roll call vote on the amended action item, which is the amendment to the superintendent's contract, extending her contract for a two-year period. Mrs. Nash?
Okay, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Ms. Boland?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary? And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, are you here?
I don't, I don't see him. There's no need for the executive section as posted this evening. I will allow the superintendent, if she would like to, address the school committee, to take a moment if she'd like. She's smiling. I think that means yes, but she's muted.
Yes, I'm muted. Thank you. Thank you to all of you on the committee. I really appreciate the opportunity. I know it's gonna, it is a big challenge, but it's just so critical and so important for our future and for our children's future and for the city of Newport. And I will continue to use all my energy and time and efforts to improve and make the changes that we need to do. I know there's a lot of, I'll say bias, I'll say mind shifts we have to do within our district, and it's gonna take all of us working together. I'm very proud that we're all working together on our book club and having our book talks, but it's gonna take more than that. And I know that. And I look to you as my bosses to continue to drive me in the direction that best reflects our needs here in this district. So thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words. And I will continue to do everything I can to make us the best school district, but not only that, the best people district for all our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. At this time, there are, there is no other business for this meeting, so adjournment would be in order. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, we'll do a simple voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much, Colleen. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.